For Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. The first item on our agenda this evening will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand. The next item on our agenda is roll call by the city clerk Lisa Del Piccolo.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
J. David Reed. All city councilors are present.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem David Frank, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the item A on the consent agenda, the meeting minutes for the special meeting on May 18th, I'd like to get that pulled from the consent agenda for correction.
All right, we will do that. The next item on the agenda is a call to public for comments on non-agenda items. Called a public for non-agenda items is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on a matter raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters at least general of a general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither the city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal tax disagreements, personnel or employment matters, the use of profanity, ethnic, racial, or gender oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates local or state laws and shall not be permitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Let's start with the gentleman over here up front.
I'd like to yield my place and mine to the others if you don't mind.
All right, the gentleman over here in the... If... Okay, we leave pretty early.
Why don't you do a stand up?
Certainly. And if you would please state your name and your address.
Sure, I will. Matt Goldsitch, 3849 Grand Mesa Drive. I don't live in Spruce Point, but I want to talk about them just a bit. And I want to talk about this ordinance that I just placed in front of you. This was an ordinance that limited Spruce Point to a specific density. It's R3A, it's the same as the hub that's across the street. This limits them to 3.4 units per acre. Hub is in there for 15, factor of four difference. If you look at Cobble Creek, which is a different zoning, it's about 1.4 units per acre. You combine those two, the difference between those two and hubs about factor of nine. So you really have to question what's happening here. Why is, why is, why did that happen to Spruce Point? It just looks like there's some bias here. We're very concerned about that. And I know the people in Spruce Point are. And I'm not speaking for all of them, I know a bunch of them. But it just doesn't seem right. Now, when we talk about, and by the way, you can see some of the numbers on the bottom, I just attached those density numbers for your reference. So the city's really got to look at this a little bit, and the staff needs to look at this. And I think one of the things that jumped out at me when I was listening to a lot of this, the hearings, is that comprehensive plan is not a binding document. It's an advisory document. It says that in the plan, I agree with that. It also says it in the, in the statute, Colorado State statute that addresses master plans. It also says that. But what I think people are missing is not looking deeper into that statute, which says that if in fact the city code incorporates a requirement for anything to adhere to that master plan, then it is indeed binding. So when we're evaluating this project, I know, I know the developer, you know, dropped from 15, planning commission says that's too high, I think they considered what happened at Spruce Point, dropped it to seven, he says, I can't do that, now he's back up to 15. But I think the comprehensive plan still applies, the density measurements or the density considerations still apply, it has to be considered. So I think that's about it. You know, I think we have to look at the binding nature of that plan and make sure that the staff, and I know that the staff doesn't report to you, but I do know the city manager does, and the staff reports to the city manager, and they need to understand what's happening out there and how people feel, and what's right and what's wrong. And switching over to a subdivision is just a runaround. So that's what I want everybody to consider.
Thank you. Is there anyone else back over here? Yes ma'am, please come forward. State your name and address for us.
Barbara Gallagher, 3716 Grand Mesa Drive in Cobble Creek. My husband and I moved to Montrose in September, and we knew and loved Montrose because we lived in Ridgeway for 20 years, and we kept coming into Montrose for everything. So we thought the Chappeta Road area was pretty perfect, it's close to town, semi-rural. We did imagine one day that the acreage next to the entrance might be developed for patio homes or single-family homes or townhouses, but we were very shocked to find out that this massive development was going to take place. We knew Montrose has a comprehensive master plan, so we thought, how can this giant complex possibly conform? If this project goes through, every developer can do whatever they want because the council is setting a precedent to us. In no way does this project conform to the surrounding area, and how does the city council justify encouraging this development by budgeting over $2 million for infrastructure incentives? Montrose will be known as a city with no backbone to enforce its master plan and will end up looking like a mishmash of bad planning. My question is, do you want this city council to leave this legacy? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else over in this area? Yes ma'am? Please state your name and address, and if anyone was interested, there's a timer up here, and you're only allowed three minutes, so...
I won't, I won't take three minutes. My name is Brenda Cofano, I live at 574 Cobble Drive, and I am approaching this from the financial end. I know the city is not giving the developer 2.34 million, but that is money that will not go into the city treasury by waiving fees. Now, with the Cobble Creek development, it's been a long time ago, but do you know how much financial assistance the developer was given? Nothing, zero, zip. In fact, the developer was asked to contribute $300,000 additional to get a water pipe pipeline up on Hog Hill, wherever that is. I just think that there's a difference in the way Cobble Creek developer was treated versus the hub developer, quite a bit in fact. Another concern I have is, I'm getting older now, I've been at Cobble Creek for literally 20 years, don't get around as much as I used to, but two people that I know have sold their homes because of the hub. Another individual I know had her home in Escrow, and when they found out about the hub, they pulled out of that Escrow. That's what it's doing to Cobble Creek. And this next little portion I am going to read because I ran it by an attorney to make sure it wasn't litigious. I think what is happening with the hub makes me wonder if literally or figuratively someone in the city, the city government is not in bed with the developer. I think this should be investigated. Also, there's been articles that makes Cobble Creek residents sound like old fuddy duddies that are very concerned about anything. What we are out there is a bunch of very normal people who have a great percentage of our net worth invested in our homes. And I don't know if the city council really wants to do anything to hurt the people that live out there. We are not all old fuddy duddies. There are families with young children with so much of their money tied up in their homes, please don't destroy that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in this section over here? Yes ma'am?
Hi, my name is Donna Nash, I live at 609 Badger Court in Cobble Creek. And I don't want to go over what everybody has said so far about the 2.34 million in incentives, I think you've heard enough and the reasons why. My concern is fire. If we had a fire, we have over 400 people that live within Cobble right now. If they build another 500, or even the smaller one that we've said, that we've heard, 160, if we had to be evacuated due to an emergency, we would not all get out. We would not get maybe even to Chappeta, and from Chappeta, we could not get onto 550. The road just would not handle that kind of traffic. And I would like you to maybe consider, who would they sue if there was loss of life or property? Who's the deep pocket? It's the city. I just like, would like you guys to consider that, and I appreciate letting us speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the side over here that would like to speak? Sir, I'm asking anyone on that, on that far side? All right, please come up.
I've been trying to move out. But it's all right. First, I have a question. Is there a representative from leadership circle here? From leadership circle?
Sir, can we ask you to come to the microphone, please, state your name and address?
Please come to the microphone to state your name and address.
I'd be glad to. I have a prop here. Has my three minutes started?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. So this is an address to the officials here, to the mayor, to the city staff and council? Sir, could you please state your name and address? Thank you. My name is Randy White. I'm 71 years old, married with five daughters, 13 grandchildren. I've been a Montrose resident for 13 years and a homeowner here for 15 years. I'm a retired engineer. I am more importantly, an enterprise advancement consultant. I met with Mr. Russo in a professional capacity one day, we had coffee together, and if I remember anything, I bought. That's probably not true. But I will say this. Enough talking about myself. My topic today is the hub project, and I pledge to offer you different thoughts that you may not have heard before. Can this microphone still pick me up if I turn? Thank you. We have a situation that has evolved into a rancorous competition. On one side, we have leadership circle, Miles versus the other side, we have Cobble Creek residents and Montrose citizens, and in the middle of it all, we have the city, the officials, Bill Bell, the planning staff, and other staff in the middle. Now, how does it feel? Probably like a hot potato. That's my problem. Only right now, it's a cold potato, and I hope that we can keep it cold. How am I doing for time?
You're about a minute left.
All right. So I'll offer this personal opinion. While the hub project may be a benefit for Montrose, as apparently rental housing is required, so I like the concept. I like the concept. My concern is that the hub is incongruous in its posed site. A dense apartment project simply does not fit into a location adjacent to a golf course community.
You have 30 seconds left, sir.
I'll go fast. I suggest that a win-win-win solution be crafted that satisfies number one, leadership circle, Matt Miles, development and profit ambitions, number two, Montrose needs four more affordable housing, number three, permits Cobble Creek to sustain a special character and home values, number four, enables Montrose to redevelop a high potential space fallen into blight. We have them. How are we going to do that?
Sir, your time is up.
May I?
If you'll finish quickly.
How would we do that? We have a conflict to resolve, we have five modes, we can compete, we can compromise, we can accommodate, we can avoid, and we can collaborate.
Sir, I've got, sir, that's, I'm gonna have to cut you off, we have several other people that would like to speak.
Okay. May I finish with a close here? And that is, I invite us to consider a collaborative workshop where we can get the various parties together professionally facilitated and craft a solution to this. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. All right, I'm gonna start in the center section, I'll work across the front row, and we'll go to the second row and work back. Is there anyone in the front row that would like to speak? In the second row, the gentleman on the far left, please state your name and address.
Ed Yulbury, 2705 Country Club Way. I can come up here and complain about the traffic on Sunnyside, but I'm here to thank the council for taking our applications and listened in what we had to say, and I wish the other applicants for District Two good luck, and again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next gentleman right here.
My name is Jim Hausness, I live at 1024 Fruit Park Road in Montrose. I've been a resident here for 22 years, and I know that the, and I was talking to you a little bit before the meeting about all the incoming flack that the council and staff gets. And I want you and I want everybody else to know that this is probably the best city government that I've seen in the 22 years that I've lived here. And one of the reasons for that is transparency and flow of information. Council is always available to talk to, to get information from. If they don't have that information, they will research it. I asked Mayor Glassbell about some issues on the hub, and he spent five hours researching that, which I really appreciate it. I had some, some questions on, on the hub traffic concerns. I called Bill Bell, Bill directed me to Scott Murphy, Scott answered my questions. If I want to go into really detailed stuff, I go to Councilor Bynum, and she knows pretty much, you know, pretty much what, you know, what's going on. But anyway, I really want to thank the council and staff for being attentive and being responsive to citizens' inquiries. And I think if more people did that, talked to you personally, I think you'd have more understanding of how city government works and what the needs of the community are. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, are there any blue jacket?
My name is Ron Sobeck, I live at 3700 Grand Mesa Drive. I've been a resident of Cobble Creek since 2005. I'm here to speak about Matt Miles' proposed development formerly called the Hub at Montrose Crossing. Three years ago, Matt Miles met with the residents of Cobble Creek to tell us intentions for the property in question. He assured us it would be limited to single-family homes, he said it would be similar to Spruce Point, which are all single-family homes. However, once he received his R3A zoning from the council, the same as Spruce Point, he changed his tune, and now he plans to develop 500 units on the property. Did he meet with Cobble Creek residents to explain the new plan? No. Why? Because he had gotten just what he wanted from Cobble Creek, no resistance to the zoning based upon his given word. Cobble Creek would have vigorously fought the proposed zoning if we knew that Matt Miles had lied to us and we couldn't take him at his word. I will call this what it is, duplicity and a bald-faced lie. I was certainly at Cobble Creek's mistake to take Matt Miles at his word, but I also believe our city should not reward this type of duplicity. Matt Miles is not the great benefactor that many in Montrose seem to think he is. Quite the contrary, if you ask people who have worked with him or for him in the past, they will tell you he's motivated purely by profit, and he's willing to ride roughshod over anybody that gets in his way. Let me give you some examples. Not only did he blatantly lie to Cobble Creek residents, he burned the fields and ditches after, after the P and Z meeting where they limited him to 250 units, he burned the fields and ditches on that property when the winds were blowing directly at Cobble Creek on two different occasions. Residents called it horrible and suffocating because we were just covered with smoke. Furthermore, he had an agreement in place with Cobble Creek to provide water for a small green strip along Cobble Drive. After the P and Z meeting, he broke that agreement and cut off the water. This is not a benefactor, this is simply a petty man who's used to having his way. He's always had his way in the city with little or no opposition, despite his questionable tactics. Fact is, he's often been rewarded with fee waivers and other incentives to help him pay for this. And who picks up the tab for that? We, the residents of the Montrose. The question becomes, why does our council allow this type of behavior to continue and be rewarded?
Sir, you have one minute left.
That's fine, I will get it done. Miles is wrong here, he was wrong to lie to Cobble Creek residents and to treat them the way he has. He persists in trying to put the wrong project in the wrong location. It's high time our city finally says no or places serious limits on a Matt Miles project. It's in your power to do so if you have the courage and the decency to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else there in that second row? Yes ma'am?
My name is Jenny Price, I live at 3700 Grand Mesa. I've been a Cobble Creek property owner since 2004. I wrote you a letter about safety because I'm very, I woke up in the middle of the night thinking, how are we gonna get out if there's a wildfire? So what I've done is come up with some of the fires that we have had in this area, we're on a two-lane country road, there's no way for equipment to get in. So on March 19th, 2021, there was a large fire on a hillside near Crestmore subdivision, do you all know where that is? So there was a lot of emergency equipment, there were dead animals, it was bad. April of '21, we saw an out-of-control burn the back of Cobble Creek where neighbors were so concerned, they started heading to the RV storage to pick up their RV equipment. Other neighbors said they're watching the buckets pour down from the helicopter. How are we gonna get out? So they're planning, what do we do to get out of here? Last year in May, there was a 92, on, no, 62 acres off Highway 92, engines, helicopter, two fixed aircraft had to come in. And I think we've all remember what happened in Paradise, California, where we lost 85 residents because people couldn't get out. It's not just from fire, it's from smoke inhalation. Also, the western United States is entering its most severe drought in modern history. We've had 1.76 inches, y'all live here, you know we're not getting any rain, all for six months. This is the worst drought in 1,200 years. When I did send all you councilors in, Mayor Glassbell, he said that it dict, that you indicate safety and security are considered for the zoning. What about the approval process? That's what I asked for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the last couple rows over here? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Ron Smith, and I do not live at Cobble Creek, I live at 16475 6475 Road. Mine will be real simple, first, I want to thank you for taking the initiative to get the signal, the intergovernmental transition for that signal at 550 and Chappeta Road. I've been close to T-Bone there, and we've had a lot of accidents there, so I was always, obviously, a big concern. I've been in this community most of 19 years, and I've rented homes here, I've rented apartments, I've rented condos, I've bought properties, sold properties, and I'm glad to be a part of this community, and I've had a lot of good years here, and I, I, I'm not moving. So you're stuck with me. The only things I'd really like to talk about tonight is the, the way that we function in terms of our development, our rezoning and things like that. I realize the city council has a lot of responsibilities, some decisions that were made some time ago were not the people sitting here, or most people that weren't sitting here. And the only thing I really ask out of this is that we use common sense, we stay out of court, we come up with reasonable solutions to an incredible community. And even though I'm not a resident of Cobble Creek or any of those particular areas, we've got gems in this community, I think we want to make sure we build responsibly around. That's what I ask for you to do as our representatives. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has not spoken yet? You've already spoken, sir.
Would you kindly indulge me? My wife is here, and she's not going to speak, so can I have a moment?
If she will grant that to you, that's fine.
You drag me out if I do.
Please state your name and address again.
Randy White, 535 Cobble Drive, Montrose. I finished off at an awkward spot. I had captured the, the need to make a win solution for leadership circle, for Montrose Town, for Cobble Creek, and to help Montrose Town to develop a potentially blighted properly into something special. How we resolve the conflict? We, we can't compromise, we tried that, it didn't work. We can accommodate, but that's not likely, Cobble Creekers won't back away. We could avoid that, but the issue is front and center. We could compete, but that has resulted in a deadlock, it's, people are getting angry, and so on. We can collaborate, collaborate. We can develop a win-win, win-win solution, that's four, because there's four elements here where we can really win. So I would invite Montrose Town leadership catalyst, Cobble Creekers, to consider a collaborative workshop with a neutral facilitator, working pro bono, conducting a one-to-two-day maximum kaizen blitz methodologies in a workshop, hosted at an inspiring location, participants from all sides, 12 people max, one black belt facilitator, one solution at the end of that that everybody will be winning with. That's my part. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda, and we're going to pull one item off of that consent agenda as it needs a correction to item A, the city council consideration of minutes of the May 18th spatial city council meeting. We'll pull that off of the consent agenda, and we will make a correction to it and do it separately.
Mr. Mayor, I noted in reviewing the minutes of the special meeting of May 18th that it indicated that I was not present, and I wanted to make sure that the record reflected I was late, but I was present at the meeting.
All right. I would take a motion to approve items B and C on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended to include just items B and C.
Second up.
I have a motion and a second, please vote.
I'm new here. That passes unanimously. Now we will take item A, city council consideration of the minutes of the May 18th, 2021 spatial city council meeting, and May 18th, 2021 regular city council meeting. and May eighteen, twenty-twenty-one Regular City Council Meeting with the correction added.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we had, uh, approved the minutes of the May eighteen, twenty-twenty-one Special City Council Meeting to reflect Counselor Reed's presence and the approval of the regular City Council Meeting.
Alright, thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number seven is appointment of a District Two City Councilor. The City Council will consider the applications of Jeff Rice, Anthony Russo and Edward Ullaberry for the vacant District Two seat on the Montrose City Council. We will actually have a ballot vote and our city clerk, Lisa Del Pickle, will pass those out and she will do the tabulation.
Mayor Glassbell, we have one vote for Jeff Rice and three votes for Anthony Russo.
Alright, thank you. I would take a motion to appoint Anthony Russo to the District Two Council position.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to appoint Anthony Russo to the District Two City Council position.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll take a short break, uh, where we do some adjustment.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a few comments?
Certainly.
Um, I want to thank all of the applicants, um, for putting your hat in the ring and for being here and available this morning to talk to us and to answer questions. I think any one of you would have made a fine addition to City Council, um, and I look forward to your continued involvement. Um, I think we have a, another Planning Commission vacancy coming up, which is, seems to be the perennial, um, opening. And, um, I would encourage both of you to apply for it.
Thank you, Barbara. How long do you need? Need about five minutes? You're ready? Okay. Yes.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Anthony Russo.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will support and bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The State of Colorado.
The State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Montrose.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Montrose.
And faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of City Councilor.
Discharge the duties of the Office of City Councilor.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The next item on the agenda this evening is item number eight. It's a Resolution, twenty-twenty-one oh-nine. The City Council consideration of Resolution twenty-twenty-one oh-nine to adopt a recently updated City of Montrose, Colorado Invasion Twenty-Forty Comprehensive Plan dated June one, twenty-twenty-one, pursuant to the Title Two, Chapter Two, Section Two-One-Six and Title Two, Chapter Two, Section Two-One-Seven of the City of Montrose Municipal Code, thereby superseding the previous two thousand and eight Comprehensive Plan. And our senior planner, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So, tonight I just have a brief presentation to kind of do a recap on what a comprehensive plan is and the process that we've gone through over the last couple of years to get to where we are today. So, our first master plan that we did for the city dates back to nineteen sixty-one and then we've had numerous updates, um, in nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen ninety-eight, and then our most recent one was in two thousand and eight. A comprehensive plan is a twenty-year vision with a ten-year focus, so that's kind of where we came up with our slogan. Our, um, Office of Business and Tourism came up with this where they're saying it's Envision Twenty-Forty. Um, some people ask us where that came from and it's just that we're envisioning twenty years out and then we're trying to focus on the next ten years as far as implementation goes. A comprehensive plan includes a community vision, values and goals that are all, um, developed over the course of the, um, public outreach meetings. It is a long-term plan that helps guide the physical growth of the community as well as development and services that the city offers as well. It's also a guide for decision-making and implementation goals. This next slide shows you a timeline of kind of where we started and how we got to where we are today. Um, we started our initial assessment back in the spring and summer of two thousand and nineteen with the Existing Conditions Report. Um, you'll actually see that as one of the appendixes in the Comprehensive Plan and that basically just gives an overview of what the city looks like today. Phase two was a variety of public meetings and workshops where we worked on developing a vision for the community as well as goals and issues that the community saw that needed to be, um, addressed. Um, then phase three was development of the framework. We had a Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee that helped us with developing the framework of the plan over the fall of two thousand and nineteen and the winter of twenty-twenty. And then over the course of the last year, twenty-twenty and then twenty-twenty-one, um, it was a bulk of the time was spent drafting the Comprehensive Plan, which brings us to today and the formal adoption of the plan and implementation. And implementation begins, you know, as soon as adoption is done as well as taking over, you know, over the course of the next ten to twenty years.
Mr. Storage, do you think you can hit the Zoom button so that we can see the whole, the visual person in me really wants to see that last phase? If you just do that, so it just shows the Elks Chamber screen?
Can you move the participant list down, is that what you're saying?
You don't have Zoom in front of you, I'm sorry.
We're missing.
No, that's, that just makes it. Sorry.
Now we know why.
Yep, that's, yeah. Or the second button over will do the same thing, it'll just be small but the one person talking. Nope, that one, the other one. Nope, not that one. The one, yep, nope, the next one over. One more to the right. And... Oh, well, we can see it now, so it's, yep. The one you keep pausing on and not actually clicking on. I don't know, it's all good. Now we can see phase fives. I'm sorry, I'm just excited we're finally at phase five after so much work and it just felt incomplete to leave it hiding behind that screen. Sorry.
That's okay. It is true, that's the most exciting phase, right? I know, we're there. So, when we started this process, our, um, city staff developed a Comprehensive Plan website. So, this was a website that was just devoted to all things Comprehensive Plan related. Um, we posted news releases on here that talked about when our different public meetings were going to be. Um, it included all the different maps that we worked on during our, um, public meetings and our workshops. We posted the Existing Conditions Report on this page. And then all of the meeting summaries and presentations that we gave at all the public meetings, we posted on this as well. So, people who couldn't attend could also go back and look at what was discussed and what the presentations included. So, um, that was really helpful, I thought. People could also click on the little notify me button on this page so that they could get informed of whenever something new was happening with the Comprehensive Plan and stay up to date on the process.
Amy, can you give us an idea, but how many public meetings did we hold?
That's coming up soon.
Okay.
Alright, so next we had a, shortly after we started this process, we developed a Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. So, we posted some outreaches, um, in the Montrose Press, I think the Mirror and a variety of other sources asking citizens from the community to participate in our Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. We ended up with fifteen members from the public as well as the City Council and Planning Commission, all participated on this committee. Their role in the process was to promote public involvement, so we asked them to reach out to all the people that they knew that might be interested in coming to the meetings and get more people there. We asked them to help provide input and feedback on the plan, serve as a sounding board for the community, help establish our community vision. And they met approximately fifteen times over the course of twenty nineteen and twenty-twenty. And one of their primary goals that they worked on over the course of those fifteen mini, meetings was to help establish our goals and objectives and also our implementation plan. Now for Doug's question. Um, we started our Comprehensive Plan with two community kickoff meetings, one in English and one in Spanish. So, these were identical, we just had one in Spanish as well, and those were in June of twenty nineteen. This one, we asked people what they loved most about Montrose. And we did some little fun activities with pennies in a jar where people talked about what they valued most in our community and basically just started with developing a vision and trying to figure out what people envisioned for our community over the course of the next twenty years. After these kickoff meetings, we also did an online survey so those people who were not able to participate in the community kickoff meetings could also answer these same questions via an online survey. Following the community kickoff meetings, we had a variety of community workshops. So, these were topic-focused and we, um, focused these based on the different chapters that were going to be included in the Comprehensive Plan. So, you can see from here, over the course of July to August of twenty nineteen, there's eight, um, workshops in addition to the two, um, community kickoff meetings. I won't read through all those, but you can see we had a variety of topics and then we also included a Spanish-speaking workshop as well that covered all of these topics in one meeting. In addition to the community workshops, once again, we wanted to reach the people who were not able to come to the workshops via online, um, access, so we had an online interactive map. This was a way where people could go to that Comprehensive Plan website and just type in like a little note on something that they saw that needed to be improved, something they saw that was working and they loved and wanted to keep, or just some areas, um, of complete change that they wanted to see. And we received over a thousand comments via these online interactive maps, so it was really a productive way to gain additional public input from those who weren't able to come to the meetings. As I mentioned, one of the roles of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee was to help us with developing a vision statement. So, after we completed all these meetings, um, with the public, the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee sat down and worked on developing a vision statement. I don't remember exactly how long this took, but it was certainly not a quick five-minute discussion, um, where all the members of the advisory committee worked together to come up with this vision. And I'll just read that because I think it's really important for our community. "Montrose will strive to be a healthy, safe and thriving community that embraces diversity in the environment. We all come together to grow responsibly to create opportunities for all." Next, we worked on developing a, um, guiding principles, goals and objectives. So, this was again, developed by the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee and was based on community feedback from all of those meetings. So, we sorted through all the different meeting summaries and worked on developing these different things for the Comprehensive Plan for each of the chapters. And this is in the Comprehensive Plan, so I won't go through each of these individually, but each of these guiding principles is based on each chapter. So, we have a guiding principle for the land use and growth chapter, a guiding principle for transportation and mobility and so forth. And then under each guiding principle, we have a set of goals and then under the set of goals, we have specific objectives that want to be met. And then these were tied to our implementation items as well at the end of the Comprehensive Plan. Finally, these are the chapters that you'll see in the Comprehensive Plan. As I mentioned, they are all focused and based upon the feedback that we receive from the community. And then, in addition to each of the topics, we had an implementation plan at the end of the Comprehensive Plan that was developed by the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. And the implementation plan was also included short-term goals, long-term goals, and then items that would be considered as ongoing throughout the life of the plan. That's all I have and I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
David, any questions?
No question, but I, I, I want to thank you and the staff and all of the participants who, uh, made this into reality. It's phenomenal, the job that, that you guys have done and I've spent some time going through this. And it is a lofty goal, it envisions a lot, uh, how this community will develop as we go forward into the future. I think it's also important and particularly timely that we remember what a Comprehensive Plan is and what a Comprehensive Plan is not. Uh, and we need to keep that in mind as we go forward with matters that we're going to consider in the future. Uh, and I think it's important for our constituents to also understand that you guys have done a marvelous job here. But it is a vision, it is not law and we need to remind ourselves of that constantly as we go forth on these projects that will be coming before us. But for tonight, thank you very much, I think, awesome job, thank you.
Thank you.
In addition to thanking the hard work of staff and in fact, um, Ms. Sharp was brought on as a, I believe, it was a temporary position just to do the, um, the Comprehensive Plan with that being your sole responsibility. And, 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 and look where we are now, we, um, you've done such a great job that now we've, uh, given you more and more and more work. Um, thank you so much for your hard work and to all of the staff who, um, had a role in it. But, more importantly, um, I want to thank all of the people in the community who contributed their ideas and their thoughts about what they loved about Montrose and what they think needed to stay the same and where there were areas for improvement. Um, and I think all of those, um, came together and all of those meetings that we had, each of those fifteen meetings was two hours long at least, um, and, and came together in this document. So, it doesn't represent my ideas, it doesn't represent Doug's ideas. It's, it's what we heard from the community and so thank you to everyone who participated with your comments and your input.
I had the, the fun time of participating in most of those little sessions and I thought they were very well-done and very well-run and actually kind of encapsulated a lot of what the community had to say. And seeing that reflected in this document, I think is a real testament to the hard work and the, the attention you've paid to our citizenry. Thank you.
I would echo those same sentiments. I did go to a lot of those meetings and I know that the hours that you guys put into them and the amount of work it was to collect that data and take that data and work it into the final document, I think that was a sub, superb job. And I think it's great when we have that much community action involved with it and the number of people I thought were, was exceptionally good for what we were doing. Thank you guys very much. Anything else? Any public comments? Don't have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would be, um, happy and honored to, um, to make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-nine in the Envision Twenty-Forty Comprehensive Plan as presented.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
I'm going to add one thing before you move on. The Comprehensive Plan was a huge effort, I will say, you know, like you said, by the public, by City Council, Planning Commission, but our staff too. I thought that our team as a staff was excellent. I mean, it wasn't just me doing it, but so many other departments without, within the city doing things from maps to, you know, the Office of Business and Tourism doing outreach and helping with the document. And it just was a really good collaborative effort from staff and I really enjoyed working with everyone on it.
Thank you, Amy. The next item is ordinance twenty-five forty-three on the first reading. City Council, consider ordinance twenty-five forty-three on first reading and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, updating Title Four, Chapter Four, Zoning Regulations of the City of Montrose, amending Title Four, Chapter Four, Section eight-point-one, four-four, eight-point-one, regarding R-five, low-density manufactured housing district and Title Four, Chapter Four- four, Chapter four, Section eight point two, four four, eight point two regarding R six medium-density manufactured housing district. Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
Right, thank you. As you mentioned, this effort is a review of our municipal code and is suggesting some modifications to update the performance standards in the sections that you've just noted, to reflect current industry standards which have changed since the current code was adopted. This modification changes the minimum roof pitch in these sections from three point five twelve to three twelve, as shown below, and in the attached redline version of the code included in your packet, and it meets building code requirements. So the recommended action is just to update Section four four, eight point one, D one, and Section four four, eight point two, D one and D two, to reflect this change in minimum roof pitch requirements in order to make sure that it reflects current industry standards, standards for, performance standards for the, these zoning districts. That's all I have on this one.
Any questions? All right, I'd open a hearing on this. Are there any persons who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Consider a motion to pass Ordinance twenty-five forty-three on first reading as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council pass a motion on Ordinance twenty-five forty-three on first reading as presented.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next item is Item ten, Ordinance twenty-five forty-four on first reading. Council consideration of Ordinance twenty-five forty-four on first reading and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, disconnecting property at sixteen seven sixty-three and sixteen seven sixty-five, twenty-seven twenty-five Road, and Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you again. So as you mentioned, this is a request to allow property that's currently within the city limits of Montrose to disconnect from city limits, or also known as de-annexation. This property is located at one six seven six-three and one six seven six-five, sixty-seven twenty-five Road, and it's approximately seven point nine five acres in size, and is shown in Exhibit A of your packet. This property is owned by Keith and Melissa Morris. So the applicant actually sent a letter to the city back in April asking that this property be disconnected from the city limits of Montrose, and they explained their reasons for this request. It is located on the eastern edge of city limits, and the disconnection would not result in the creation of a county island. The property is currently being serviced by Tri-County Water, a septic system, and Bruin Waste for Trash Services. This property was annexed into Montrose city limits back in two thousand and five as part of the lake addition, and a pre-annexation agreement was also signed back in two thousand and five for future improvements. These improvements have not yet been completed and would not be required for disconnection. City staff has been advised by the City Attorney's Office that the state statute applicable to this type of request does not apply to home rural municipalities. The ordinance provided in this packet is the City of Montrose's procedure for providing such a request for de-annexation or disconnection of city limits. This requires the adoption of ordinance if City Council approves. That, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions, David?
I am correct that this has no financial implications to the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I had a concern at work session that if and when someone wants to de-annex, that in addition to looking at their utilities, that they are also informed or made aware that they no longer would be eligible to vote in municipal elections, and just so that doesn't come to surprise them at any point. Do you know if they, if anyone on staff had an opportunity to make sure the applicant was aware of that?
I have not, but I'll make a note and make sure I do that before the second reading.
All right, I, let's see, any public comments on that? Hold a hearing, nobody's interested, okay. I consider a motion.
Pardon?
Yeah, I just opened it and closed it, yeah. No hearing, he didn't have anything.
Thought I'd close the hearing.
Thank you. I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance twenty-five forty-four on first reading as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Amy. Item number eleven, it's Ordinance twenty-five forty-two on second reading. City Council consideration of Ordinance twenty-five forty-two on second reading and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, designating Montrose Fire Department, number one at twenty-four South Uncompadre Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as the City of Montrose Historic Property, pursuant to four dash fifteen of the official code of the City of Montrose. Staff Planner, William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. As stated, this is the second reading for an ordinance designating the Montrose Fire Department number one building, also known as our City Hall Annex, as a historic property. Nothing has changed since the first reading, but I will share an abridged version of my presentation here. On April twenty-seventh, the City of Montrose Historic Preservation Commission voted unanimously to recommend to the City Council approval of twenty-four South Ungam Pogray Avenue for our historic register. On May eighteenth, City Council considered and approved this ordinance on first reading. The fire department was constructed in nineteen ten and is therefore old enough to be eligible for designation. In addition, the building is eligible due to its longstanding association with fire protection in the City of Montrose. The building served a critical need at the beginning of the twentieth century for Montrose's quickly-expanding population. Prior to its construction, the first uniformed fire department was formed in nineteen oh eight, and the city needed a more substantial home for the department. John Antribus was the architect who also designed the building we're sitting in, as well as City Hall. The building was completed in nineteen ten, and the fire department moved in by June of that year. The first fire wagons were pulled by horses, which are pictured here with the first fire chief of Montrose. However, with changing technology, the city needed to upgrade their fire engines over time, as well as the main entrance to the building. In nineteen twenty-three, the fire department paraded out their, their horse-drawn wagon for the last time, and this was replaced by the city's first motorized fire engine in that same year. The building is also eligible due to its architectural design. The station is representative of the type and method of construction, which was prevalent in Montrose from the nineteen, from the eighteen nineties through the first through two decades of the twentieth century. The fire station features a stepped parapet wall with stone identification panels. Below the parapet wall is a characteristic decorative brick, decorative brick cornice. A similar cornice is found over the original truck bay. This decorative brickwork also serves as the sill for the windows over this bay. On the north facade, the multicolored brick masonry is characteristic of architecture in the region, as well as the multiple arched windows and doorways. Also notable is the beam extending from the building above an arched second-floor doorway, which was originally used as a pulley system to raise and lower hay for the horses. On the, on the south facade, more of the multicolored brick masonry, as well as more of the arched openings with blond brick lug sills. And finally, the rear of the building, which was originally used as a jail, still features these metal jail windows with the blond brick sills. Staff finds that the eligibility and integrity criteria for designation have been met. As the owner of the property, the city agrees to comply with all city codes and regulations pertaining to modifying, upgrading, removing, or in any other way altering the physical characteristics of the property that affect its historical character. Staff recommends the approval for historic designation of the Montrose Fire Department number one, City Hall Annex. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Council? In that case, is there any public comment that anyone would like to make? I see no one raising a hand for public comment. I would consider a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Ordinance twenty-five forty-two on second reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item twelve, the staff reports. Do we have any staff reports this evening? Mr. Bell? Mr. Alcorn? Sorry, I didn't mean to wake you guys all up, huh? In that case, how about Council? Any comments?
What about the proclamation for President Foster?
We'll be doing the proclamation tomorrow morning at the forum.
And we don't need to take action to authorize the mayor to sign that?
No.
Then go for it. Thank you.
I think just as an item of interest that we will be, Mayor Glassbell will be issuing a proclamation tomorrow honoring former CMU President Tim Foster, and I think that our entire valley has a great deal of gratitude and respect for all the work Mr. Foster has done. I just want to enter that in the public record for today.
Thank you.
Can I follow up with the details for tomorrow's forum, which is when that'll happen? So that'll happen at the community forum tomorrow. It's the first time forum has, has taken place in about fifteen months, so I'm excited that we will be honoring former President Foster, and that's eight AM at CMU Montrose's Cascade Hall, and that program is, is free, and anyone is welcome to come.
And that's right across from the library, correct?
It is, um, to the south of the library, yes, exactly, across the street to the south of the library.
In that case, the Council, any other comments?
So this morning, at lunch, Mayor Glassbell and I had a great opportunity and honor of accepting a check from the Montrose Rotary Clubs for their pledge toward the amphitheater, and it was a check for one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. And it was a wonderful event, and it was a, it's great seeing our community organizations participating in events like this.
Yes, and I thought it was great, too, with the amount of folks that were there and the amount of time that they have put in to promote this throughout the community. So it's been extremely helpful, I think, in, in getting this project to where we are. And if you haven't been out there recently, you need to drive by because it's coming along pretty quickly. Anthony?
I'd like to make a statement. I, I would just want to say thank you to everyone here, the staff, and we've worked together over the years in different capacities, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to serve the city of Montrose, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Um, yeah, I have another comment, and that is, earlier this year, the city agreed to partner and put money towards a childcare needs survey. The county also put in money, and it's being done by Uncompadre Valley Alliance, Bright Futures, and they have hired a consultant to do it, and it's going well. They've gotten a whole bunch of survey responses. They have also had a focus group meeting with licensed child, early childhood educators, but they are now looking at a focus group with unlicensed or non-licensed providers, and that would be a nanny, or a full-time babysitter, or a license-exempt provider. And they're going to be doing that on June fifteenth from six-thirty to seven-thirty PM, and they're looking for participants, and they do need you to sign up. And so I would say the best person on the city side to get in touch with for more information would be our community engagement specialist, Ross Valdez, and his number is two four zero fourteen seventy-one, and they're going to be doing one focus group in English and one focus group in Spanish. So if you know someone who provides non-licensed early childhood education, sometimes called daycare, we'd love to get them in that focus group, so we can make sure that this comprehensive childcare needs survey includes all voices. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? In that case, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks, for attending.